December 8th, 2015 to order. Good evening. First thing on the agenda is the minutes of December 1st. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of December 1st, 2015 as modified.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? Thank you very much. Next on the list is approval not required. Applicant Mark Stowers. Stow's to combine two lots into one located at 115 Lucerne Ave. and Lot 54 Alma Road, BSS Design. Yes, for the applicant?
For the applicant. I'm Tom Bunker with BSS Design. Mark Stow's owns both of these lots. One has a Lucerne Ave. address, the other Alma Road. This north one is undeveloped. He just now wants to combine them. He purchased this one to protect his left north flank. Just combining them into one lot. No other plans at the moment.
No big deal.
Any questions?
So I guess it's vacant land?
Yes.
What's the size of these, of Lot 53?
Well, it's...
Looks like it's small on a second one.
About 12, 13,000.
So it could end up being about an acre?
Thirty thousand, three quarters of a acre.
That's the total, the 30,000?
That's the total.
That's the total.
That's the total, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is 53, oh, 54, calling the total 53 acres.
Okay, thanks.
Not that it has anything to do with your request, but Brian, is this an asphalt pipe coming from a water drain right into the pond? Is that what we're looking at here?
You're now looking at that?
Is that what we see?
That's what you see.
I see it.
I'm sorry, we're not looking at it, but that's what we see. Just likes to note where they are.
So I'll leave it.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion? Approved.
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah? I looked at you, you did. With my eye contact.
We all look agreeable.
You're all smiling, sorry about that.
You gotta give me 20 bucks too.
No acceptance.
All in favor, please wink.
The next one. Estate of Barbara Atwood combined two lots into one. Quisson Avenue, Holmes and McGrath. You can see again, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, it's a combination of lots into one, so it's not a subdivision by definition. And entitled to your endorsement, approval not required.
Let's see it on there. Oh, there it is. Locust, right here.
Looking for an endorsement?
I would move that we endorse this plan as approvable as an A and R.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just wanted to make sure I understand which ones we're adding.
It's the green line, we're adding these two lots. This lot's going away, these are becoming one.
Twenty and thirty one. Twenty and thirty one, okay. Not clear, thank you.
Well, we asked the question before, that's why we knew. All right, we have a motion for endorsement in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead. Sorry I didn't interrupt.
According to the lot line, it shows going all the way up to Agassi Road. I thought we were just talking about 31 and 20. Are we all concluding this lot?
No, you're looking at the locus up there. I don't think it's referring to the lot specifically up there. The lot, I believe it's only the plan in front of you. This is just the locus showing the general area?
It shows the three lots in the locus, but there's only two.
It's just mean to show what part of town it's in. I don't think it's meant to that degree of accuracy.
Okay.
It's supposed to be saying, here it is. And then there's zero in on this. They're not even to scale.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, we endorse, thank you. Jeez, Paul, you complain we don't have a locus plan this time. He's chewing a pie, kidding. As a joke.
Should be accurate.
Just kidding, I was just making a joke.
It's engineering, isn't it, son?
Okay, the next item on the, is a planning board discussion and decision. McGansett Crossing LLC. This is a local initiative program. Let's see, we had some questions, I think, the last time. Did we not, for the applicant?
We had, we had asked if there was any room to shift back.
Oh, yeah, we were talking about it, going back and forth, and it doesn't look to be... You want to get up and talk again, Mike?
Sure.
Mr. Colazo, you have a very tight site there, so we're asking questions about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Colazo, McGansett Crossing LLC. And I think we left off the last meeting that members were going to go out and do a site visit, so I hope you got an opportunity to do that and take a look at the property. And as the chairman was saying, that it is a very tight site. I think the curvature of the street and either going down or up the hill will help offset the look of the houses being lined up, you know, shoulder to shoulder. That isn't our intent. There is only about three feet left before we get to that 25-foot setback that's required by Mass DOT. I do want to mention one other thing I forgot to mention last time, that the changes, what you're looking at, if you recall, this is an already approved 40B, we're the new developer, and we made some modifications to the plan. We presented that information to Ollie's Committee, the Family Affordable Housing Committee, and they endorsed the changes, and I believe they sent the letter on to both the selectmen to your board too. So I'm available to answer any other questions you may have. Hopefully, the next step would be your endorsement and moving the project on to the selectmen for their review.
Yes?
Mike, I'm not, this is new to us, and I'm not sure how much influence we have on something, but I was looking at the, I think it's the second page, and it shows the buildings in elevation, and it just looks like they were book matched. Is there any way that that could get changed? Mix it up a little bit, make it a little less...
We have three different variety of...
Yeah, you have three different varieties, but you've got six buildings, and then they're just book match.
You mean as far as rearranging the order of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something that I don't see Paul would be...
Yeah, I like the fact that you've used different roof lines and things like that, but then what I was looking at, it's like, oh, okay, it's just, it's book matched.
Sure.
Yeah. It'd be nice to mix it up a little bit. Justice.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think it's, looks good and be nice.
Anybody else?
I don't know, is there any question about lighting? Is there extra lighting that we should be discussing?
Yeah, I will tell you that one of the neighbors, we did have a meeting with the neighborhood out there, they expressed a concern about lighting along that loop road in the back, and we told them that, I didn't have any specifics as far as the lighting, but that we will make sure that we get something that is directed down at the, down at the, you know, at the roadway and not something that blows up in the air. So we'll actually have streetlights that will go along that.
We usually request that all the lighting be kept on the site.
Yeah.
You can try to work towards that, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
You know, nothing going up in the air?
No.
You know, so we don't want to...
Yeah, be sort of like what I call a Cobra head.
Yes.
A little nicer than that.
In general, we'd like to decrease the lumen town, you know, not get brighter and brighter in our skies, keep everything focused where we need it. If we don't get a chance, but this is one of the, if we get to comment on, anything else?
Speaking about illumination, will the entrance and exit be illuminated at all? Because I know in some of these roads, when you're coming in at night trying to find an entrance...
We do have a link on the civil plan at the entrance, it's right to the right of the middle, and this plan right here is right there. And there is one right over here.
Okay.
Yes, Paul?
Okay, I have just one comment. Came up the other day, there are, I think, 12 crossings, wet taps going across the roadway. I'd like at least think about having maybe a four inch going over the hydrant on this side of the street, but that's up to you.
We'll discuss that with the DW, the water department. We will have individual water meters for each one of the units, and if there's a more efficient way to do that than running the 12 across, we'll definitely look at...
They'd have to look at.
What's our role? Is it an endorsement?
It's an endorsement, correct?
It's along your recommendation.
Just a recommendation, so, yeah, this is, board's going to others, this is, we're just reviewing it and giving comments, so...
So, another question. All the gutters are directed to these drywall drains? Is that correct?
All the gutters are directed, I'm sorry.
The gutter runoff is run to drywall? Is that, am I understanding that right? Or is it just naturally draining?
Good question, sorry, I'm not exactly sure of the answer to that.
Oh, it would be a requirement to keep all the runoff on site.
Yes, definitely. If it's on site, we're not running it anywhere off site, but whether it's going into a drywall, I'm not sure, but it's...
Okay. I think that's it for me. Okay. I think we're in a position we can make a favorable recommendation, yes, Paul?
Okay, I move that we endorse this plan under the lip, and that as part of our endorsement, the concerns that were brought up here be forwarded on to the approving authority.
Got it.
Okay. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim?
Yes?
Yeah, I just wondered what the protocol's going to be here now, Brian, when this happens? Will you forward a letter to the board?
We'll draft a letter for Jim's signature.
To the board of selectmen and the zoning board of appeals?
We'll copy the board of appeals. Ultimately, the board of appeals makes these decisions. You're sending along a recommendation. Don't need to get lost too much in the room.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, accessory bylaw. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I just want to sort of degrease the discussion you had last week and public discussion. I just want to make sure that we're all on, sort of on the same page when we draft this for your consideration for your next meeting. So I guess a few clarifications?
Absolutely.
Questions for the board? I just want to make sure we all understand that the bylaw would apply not only to existing dwellings, but to new construction. I just want to make sure the board is agreeing to that before we make sure we make those clarifications. If you want to further discuss that, we need to hear that now from you. I know Bob had some concerns.
Yeah, I was never under that impression that we were going to allow people to build cottages in their backyard for rental units. Because what started this off was looking at the conversion bylaw, and when we started passing that and looking at dates and all the restrictions and everything else, we thought that this would end up replacing that. And, you know, looking at some of the constraints in this, I wouldn't see where we could allow new construction. I've looked at it as something, is you have an existing garage, you want to put it, change it over to a little rental unit, put a dorm around the garage, maybe add a little bit bigger footprint, put a kitchen in it or something like that. I never really thought of it as adding another new dwelling unit to the property, but that's my feeling on it.
I agree with Bob's understanding of it. My, when the idea of new construction came up, it's exactly like I was thinking, you might have to add on a little bit.
Yeah.
Or add on a little bit to the main house so that there can be an...
The conversion bylaw didn't allow that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was my understanding of new construction. Not that it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
But not a whole separate new unit.
Right, yeah.
It shows you we all to be in the same place and have a discussion come away differently. I particularly remember looking at examples in the term granny flats and looking at small modules that were designed architecturally to blend in with the house and look natural, you know, not look like a special unit, but that, that's a way to create more units pretty quickly if we can do it. If we take that out, I would guess that's probably going to cut back the production by 50% or some number. But I just wondered, should we continue to talk about that? Do you guys feel, if there was a way that it could be designed to look like it belongs in the neighborhood, and, you know, remember, this is a scale, it's going to be no more than 30% of the primary structure. It also is limited to 800 square feet, I think that's a limitation to it, so these are fairly small, but just large enough for, you know, a family member to be able to stay on site. Ideally, that was the thought process. Yes, these things could be rented, and if we put too many restrictions on them, we'll never build them. But the idea is that these, that they would at least be built to first go around by family people, for the people that live on site, because that's who you want living in your backyard.
Yeah.
But that's, that was discussion, a few fields...
Eight hundred square feet is actually pretty significant. My house is 956 square feet, and it's pretty big when you look at it.
Ours is 1,100.
It's a story and a half.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's bigger than a garage, but, so...
Yes?
Right, so I, we're looking at number seven on this draft, is that correct? Is that what everybody, is that where everybody is?
Yep.
Okay. So it says that, so it should be constructed so as to, the appearance of the building remains that of a single-family residence. Then it says, or accessory structure incidental thereto. Now that, I assume refers to an existing building such as the woman who testified last, at our last meeting, where she had a building behind the, behind the residence, even though it wasn't her primary residence, and it wouldn't really be applied here. I assume that that is what that portion of this sentence is. Is that right, Brian? Is that, is that, is that what, is that my understanding?
Right. And what we're trying to make sure, re-clarify, is that, does this only apply to existing structures as of 2015, or if I can construct a new building in 2016, can I still take advantage of this bylaw, is the question? Or is this... Seven was interpreted by some to mean new construction, by others, not to mean new construction. So we need to clarify it either way. I think there's a question of whether it's attached or not detached, too. I mean, isn't that your question, too? You wouldn't be opposed if there was a little bump out in the back that's attached?
No, no, no.
So we have two issues where... Let's say you had a garage. A detached garage, you wanted to put above an apartment.
Did you say attached or detached?
Detached.
Detached.
So long it still looks like a garage.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven would interpret, seven's interpreted to mean that the garage must be no different than you would see under normal circumstances. You would say, oh, it's a garage.
Yeah.
But the question is, does it need to be an existing garage? Or can I build a new accessory structure, a two-car garage with the apartment above? Is the question that's in front of the board.
Well, in that, in that case, I would, I would be interested in, I agree with Bob, I would say that the word existing needs to be placed in front of accessory structure incidental thereto, and existing as of some date that we determine, because...
I would be...
I'm not, I'm not in favor of constructing new freestanding structures to accommodate an accessory apartment.
Yes, Paul?
I'm in agreement with Bob in that, Pat, I thought this was addressing an existing structure, not a new structure we were talking about. But if you carry this to the extreme, what's to prevent someone from moving in a trailer and setting that up on a property? That could be a new building, it could blend in very nicely, but is that what we're really suggesting here, that that could happen?
I don't think that would pass a design review.
According to this, it could.
Well, that's just your interpretation, but we'd still have a design review process. I don't think that would fit the criteria, but I have another question, if you're done...
We spent a lot of time talking about blending in and screening it, doing things like that, which you can do.
Right.
In a number of different ways, but is that something that would be permitted under this or not? That's my question.
A permanent location of a trailer?
Moving a trailer has a permanent structure. Some of these trailers look like permanent structures. Mobile home, not a trailer, mobile home, excuse me.
I don't even know how that goes into the building code, Paul, I'm not sure that makes... Well, you know, the single Y's and double Y's, and it, does it resemble a single-family dwelling or an accessory structure thereto? I think the question, though, really, before we get into the design details, is do you want this to apply only to structures in existence as of a certain date? Let's tackle that question.
So on that, I would say we should keep open the door to, maybe somebody would want to consider building a two-car garage with an apartment above it. That would be new construction. It would still facilitate an accessory apartment. I don't really see the harm in that. And if we're going to consider this, would we then consider that the garage portion would be not included in the apartment? Because a two-car garage is typically 500 or 600 square feet, and that would preclude the upstairs, you know, 200 square feet, not going to be enough to do anything. So I feel like new construction could be appropriate if it's controlled and if you have ultimately the design process, which we have yet to determine what it will be, but in talking with Mr. Curry during the week about this, there was some thought about, which we, maybe I should read, but there's consideration of maybe that it could be a design process, maybe by the planning board or designee, maybe the ZPA, without a special permit, but yet still retaining a design review. We'll get to that, but I'm just saying, we still have control over what we approve, just because we say they can do it. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't work, then we don't have to approve it.
I know, I was of a different mind. I actually thought we were talking about possible an extra structure, whether detached or not, and building a new one. I actually thought we were looking at doing all of it to create it. However, I would definitely yield to, I want my board members to consider, we're trying to increase the amount of building and not put so many regulations on it that we don't get anything done. But I think, well, listen, I think we have to go with what you feel, especially there seems to be more than one of you that feels this way. So that's, you want to keep talking about it, or you feel firmly about it?
Well, no, I mean, you know, you guys bring up some good points.
Well, it doesn't have to be over, we're not deciding this now, but if, but if we all say this is it, it's not going to go too much further.
I have another reason for that, too, Jim, is that we say shall not exceed four bedrooms when the lot contains 20,000 square feet or less. We're not putting a minimal square footage for the lot on this. So if you get a 5,000-square-foot lot, let's just say, my brain doesn't really go to these like people who build those.
Your lot coverage ratio is what we're going by.
Yeah, but, okay, let's say they put a one-car garage on or something like that. I don't think it'll work. You're adding more density.
Well, I don't know. A 5,000-square-foot garage, let's talk about a house, I mean, a 5,000-square-foot lot, put a house in a garage on and talk about lot coverage, I don't think there's anything left.
I don't, I don't know, but we're not putting a minimum on this.
Well, there's 20%, yet the lot coverage is 20%, so...
But can be up to 25.
Well, that's a special permit, that's a whole different thing.
I just am concerned about, so maybe I took 5,000 and I shouldn't have, maybe I should have taken 10,000. And I'm concerned about the visual appearance of overcrowding of the lots, so that if you can put on a separate building, you essentially visually are almost dividing it into two separate lots. That's a lot of my concern, too. I remember that we subdivided one on, I think it was Lakeview, because there was a small house set to the back and the main house set to the front, and we'd subdivided the lot without regard to buildability, because there were two separate houses on it. So we were curious as to how that ever happened. This is the kind of thing I can see happening here, too, if we allow... This is the kind of thing I can see happening here, too, if we allow separate buildings, new construction.
So you're against them, you're saying they should be attached? Is that the main point?
I think they should be attached, anything that might be built, you know, like a granny flat.
Well, I guess I could go along, well, I can go along with every lot, but it does, as long as we're moving positive, I think if they're attached, and you could add on that, that is a positive move, so that sounds fair. Doug, you have...
I was just going to say the same thing, she said it before I did, but maybe then we should say that if it is going to be new construction, it needs to be attached.
How does that go through?
This is going to, this isn't going to be townwide, this is, are we creating a district for this, or is this going to be townwide?
We're not.
We haven't decided.
Not there yet. We're not there yet. I mean, we could limit it that way.
Yeah, so that would be one way that might sway me a little bit more to allow new construction. So if you did have an empty lot somewhere in town where this district was, that you could essentially put an apartment over the garage, or an accessory unit when you build it new. So I could see that happen, but...
So the theme here is attached still? That's the...
I think so.
Attached?
I think so, yeah.
Just let me bring the board's attention then back to your first page on your definition where you started. You were talking about it being a second unit, subordinate to the principal, located either in the principal dwelling or in accessory structure on the lot. So we're going to revisit that whole question?
Attached thereto, it sounds like it.
Well, or an existing accessory structure.
So you, it sounds like you want this to revert back to what's on the ground today, not new construction, and...
New construction if it's attached.
It's attached.
If it's, new construction, it would have to be within the dwelling. That's what I'm hearing right now.
Or constructed adjacent and attached.
Attached is the word.
Or an attached garage.
We'll say, I want to keep open the attached garage option.
Or it could have a room in between, a buffer, you know, like a mudroom between the two houses, so you see that all the time. Okay, let's see, maybe I can work up some language.
I think that that's the overall theme, is attached, right?
I guess. It just seems like we're getting into multi-housing when we start doing that.
Well, we are, we're talking about...
We're going to allow two family houses to be built, so...
Well, we're doing very small accessory to the main one, that's exactly what we're talking about, yeah.
Essentially an accessory duplex.
Yeah.
Unit.
Yeah.
Ralph, so?
Well, yeah, what else would you have that wouldn't, that you could still do? Go ahead, now, sorry.
Yeah, does the word "principal" belong in front of the word "building" on the second line of that paragraph? So it would read, "The appearance of the principal building remains that of a single-family residence?" Or is it, what building are we talking about there? I need to, I need to, I think that needs clarification, because if you have a second freestanding building somewhere...
So if you look at the second clause of the second sentence, it says, "To be constructed so as to maintain the appearance, if you're in the principal structure, in the essential character of a single-family dwelling, and any other accessory structure is on the lot." So if I have a garage or a barn, it has to maintain the essential character of that garage or a barn.
Okay, so the word "principal" doesn't belong there, and it doesn't...
Well, again, right now, the bylaw is speaking to both a principal structure, you could have an accessory apartment, and the bylaw is right now speaking to an accessory structure. But it sounds as though the board wants to look at any new construction, the accessory apartment is within the principal structure, and that now you have to have an existing accessory structure to have an accessory apartment. So let me go back and see if I can rework the language for you, get rid of some of the strikeouts and whatnot, if that's where the board wants to head with this.
Could you say that there will be no new footprint created by the addition of an accessory unit?
That's not what we're saying. If you have an existing building, you could say, sure.
Yeah, okay, you don't have to necessarily go up, you could go out.
Sometimes it's better to go out than up, right? So I wouldn't eliminate that design alternative. But what, again, for the clarification purposes, I mean, the board needs to come to some sort of agreement about what it is you want to allow, and it sounds as though you want to work on some language about new construction versus existing structure. And it sounds as though you want to maintain a new construction in the dwelling. Can you go from there? If that's what, if that's what I'm hearing the board wants.
Not quite, I think, or maybe I'm wrong. So I don't know, because this is, if I'm right, it should be very simple. Located in either the principal dwelling, attached to the principal dwelling, or in an existing accessory structure.
That's what I'm hearing.
Oh, okay. So it should be a very simplistic change in thing.
It's a profound change.
Well, yeah, but I mean, simple to do on the paper.
The words, I'll work with it for you, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing what the board wants this to say.
Just, here's a thought, just a question. Say you have a rural setting, a large house, a garage, and they want to build a barn. And the barn looks like a barn, it doesn't look like a single-family, but could they be precluded from putting a unit in the barn under this bylaw?
I'm hearing that's exactly right.
Even though they would look totally like a barn, look appropriate to the neighborhood, and wouldn't have an impact on it, would not be allowed?
Right.
Okay, just one, this is a complicated process. Brian, is there guidance from other cities and towns on this particular issue that we're wrestling with?
Oh, yeah, you have every bylaw in the car and you've talked these paths.
Is there any chance we could revisit one, just to, just to be sure we're doing it right?
Again, it's okay to go through this iterative exercise. Sometimes you start here, and guess what? You wind right back. But it's okay to have these discussions, thinking through, talk about it, and I'll draft the language, and you can think about, okay, do I have a barn, is there an apartment above? Or do you want that apartment in the single-family dwelling? So we can talk about some.
We had also...
But it's sort of, I'm sorry, but it's sort of important, because, you know, our building official is going to issue a permit if it isn't really what the board was thinking.
We had also talked in our small group when we were talking about housing with a accessory apartment bylaw, to see if we could do it as an overlay, I don't know if that's the proper term, an overlay district, or something of that nature, that we limited to, say, in a sewered area where there's public water initially, and where we would like to see increased density. And so that's what you were bringing up, Bob, and I think that's something that we want to talk about with this, because when you've got a small apartment of this nature, you would like to encourage young people, you'd like to encourage granny flats, where people would like to enjoy the amenities of the town, have public transportation. And so we had originally talked about putting it in such a, I don't want to say restricted, because we didn't envision it as being horrendously restricted, but to see how it works, what questions might come up, and then revisiting it after that.
Well, I think we worked a little harder here, we're going to look, we made progress.
And, you know, when you give examples, I can see, you know, I can see your point.
But you don't know, though.
No, 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 but I can see where, oh, yeah, you know, that wouldn't be all that bad to do that, or I could see somebody wanting to do that. And then we start looking at, okay, with one way, we have to set a date. And it seems we get into trouble when we set dates on these things. And I think we were trying to get away from a date with the conversion bylaw, and if we just allow this, as, you know, Doug and Jim have suggested, then I don't think we'd need to put a date on it if we're going to allow new construction. But if we don't allow it for new construction, then we would have to put a date on it. So that's kind of the quandary I'm in right now.
I would encourage everybody to find a way to be less restrictive if we can, and then protect what you need to.
When you put a date on it, you become more restrictive, and then it looks like this, so...
Yes, Doug?
So the only trouble, I think, is when we're trying to put an overlay district in, say, downtown or central areas where we want to increase density, those areas already have zoning which allows for more density in other ways.
Some of them do, yeah.
So probably it's going to be less effective if we do that.
Right, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here, though. We first create it and then see where we want to put it. I mean, you're right, downtown has general residential zoning already, we could expand that in those areas, it's, that's an attached structure, it's already existed, we could work within our existing zoning and create that, but there's probably a further discussion here.
Yeah, but I'm still thinking, if we can figure it out to make it done right, I'd like it to be townwide myself.
Is that enough discussion for tonight? Anybody else? Okay. So the other, two other items I just want to discuss with the board quickly. One is very quick, and on that affidavit, I just want to make sure I heard, the affidavit is to indicate that only one of the units is rented. Not that it's also the domicile of the owner, but only one unit can be rented. Here's an idea I have for the board, and I discussed with Doug previously, so I just want the board to consider this. Because you had some very thoughtful comments from the public about design guidelines and revisiting the special permit. So perhaps you could talk to the historic districts commission about the joys and agonies and ecstasies of design guidelines for single-family dwellings, because they can't really be guidelines, just like our landscape bylaw and others, it has to be somehow incorporated into the zoning bylaw and voted by town meeting. And we can't quite surrender our regulatory authority to an outside agency or a person or whatever. So I give us a lot of thought, or some thought. There's some case law out there that we've just had for the last, oh, twenty, thirty years, about when you have, you know, accessory structures and principal structures, and the accessory structure can only be so high, remember now, it can only be eighteen feet, whereas your principal structure can be thirty-five. And we've had folks come along, they put breezeways or connections or, you know, trellis or whatever it is, to connect it to their accessory structure and then call apart the principal structure. And the courts have come back, and the building commissioner has denied that, no, you can't have a thirty-five-foot-tall, go up. And what we've heard back from the courts is that, yes, we are entitled to determine whether there's a unified architectural effect. And that, absent a unified architectural effect, these permits don't have the issue. So I thought that was a really important case that was decided some many years ago, and Lottie and I were talking about it, and I thought it might be good for the board to maybe consider that as your guidelines, because it's tested, and that if we want to think about, perhaps, you have the role of a design review committee for commercial development, you want to expand that role under a plan review, a site plan review. It's an administrative proceeding, it's not, you can't deny it, you can reasonably condition it, and your guiding, your guidance would be, is, does this accessory apartment integrate a uniformed architectural effect? And go from there. Now, I haven't kind of figured out all the mechanics of that, but I think as a concept to think about and the board to discuss, I think it would eliminate the role over the need for a special permit. It would give the board some site plan authority, and you know that can be actually used to good fact at times, and you'll have a very concrete and distinct design guideline that doesn't force a reg, or a statutory scheme, but you can look at a neighborhood and say, does this fit the statute, does this fit the architectural, uniform architectural scheme of the neighborhood? Go from there. So you might think about it for a while, discuss it for a while, if it's something the board wants to migrate towards, then I'll work on that later.
It's funny you should mention that, I didn't know if we wanted to get into that aspect of it, but, again, trying to keep the processes unrestricted as possible, you know, you still have to pull a building permit, you have to get an architect to design the plans, and the whole idea of a special permit, I think we've had that discussion, and I'm kind of trying to avoid special permits, but I was thinking today, after Mike made comments about an architectural review type of thing, and I thought that after the building department has presented the plans and all that, the only other step would be to come before this board with, sort of like the staff reports that we get, and with all the things for the, this bylaw, they just check them off as they go, and one of those things would be a design review by us, as a site plan or design review, or whatever we want to call it, since we have taken on that role. And it wouldn't be something that I would feel people would have to hire a lawyer for, not that I'm against lawyers, I've got three of them in my family now, but I just wanted to make it less onerous, and I thought that might be one way to go, is keep it with us.
I want to think about this language in particular, because in my vision, I actually can visualize, keep in mind, I know you don't want to see the two-family and make a multifamily housing interview, but I have seen houses, there's a house on Shore Street that I go by, and I don't even notice that it's a second home. It looks like part of the same house, it's offset a little bit, but you can walk between them, it almost looks like it's attached, it's lower, it's the left wing, you know, it's that unified architectural effect that we may want to keep the door open for. That would solve the barn problem, okay? As the thing is, what we need to do is have the language that ensure, in your view, that it doesn't look like we're making duplexes everywhere. I don't know if that's a strong enough language to give you cover on that thought process or not.
It would be. And I would love to do it with a special permit, but the reason we're getting insisted on special permit is that we only want one unit rented, we want to have an affidavit, and we would need to have teeth in there to make it disappear if somebody just did it, and then all of a sudden, both units are rented, no owner occupancy, and there's no special permit to put teeth in it.
Well, if we were the special permit granting authority, no...
Well, we just get ourselves real busy here. The board understands that the conditions of a plan, let's say it was a CVS.
Yeah.
It was buy right. Your site plan review goes down to the building commissioner, is made part of the building permit, and is enforceable. So don't think you're wedded to a special permit. Think about how this operates if it were a buy-right commercial use. Your plan review still has carries and...
So Brian, you're saying if we have the yearly affidavit that we were talking about...
It goes to the building commissioner.
Okay, and if something funky happens there...
It's still attached to a building permit, which is enforceable.
Okay.
Okay, you got some nods?
Yeah.
Interesting?
I like that.
We haven't closed out anything yet, we're still talking. I just don't want to spend, you know, a day's worth of research and work, and come back and say, yeah.
I'd like to blend some of these ideas and see if we can get it, if we can take this unified architectural effect, not look like a two-family, and, you know, Mike's idea about having an architect, have to design it and make it fit, and if they convince the approving board that it meets all that criteria, then it meets it. Not that it fits, you know, it's more like, it either meets it or it doesn't, it doesn't have a rule it has to be attached here, or it has to be, you know, it has to, the heights, you know, the thirty percent ratios, the sizing, the eighteen feet, all those things are still in effect, but if they can give it that effect, we could possibly approve it. But that'd be a design... But that'd be designed for discussion right now. We're not done there, but that's where we're going.
Yes.
Okay?
So I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, we'll work on that.
I think that's positive.
Yeah.
How do you guys feel? Ralph, you with us on that?
Yeah.
Paul?
I like the buzzword.
Yeah.
Universal, unified architectural effect, that's pretty fancy. UA.
Okay, so that's all I have on that for the board tonight. It was a short week last week, we were busy down Barnstable.
Yeah.
But I was getting to work on that. Okay, next on the agenda is multifamily zoning district.
Yes.
Okay, so on your table, you'll see some maps.
Okay, now we're switching to the big maps.
Yeah. So let me, this is the whole damn town. I've got a lot of room, but I'm going to give you out some information. We've got a townwide map up right now, right?
Yes. Is that, do you want us to have that?
So far, so good. It's got my little developments on here.
This map is showing us just the color codes that show, for example, apartments 48, that means 48 apartments per unit, and there's 43 properties of 43 buildings. What's the code here?
Right now, just look at the colored codes for the map.
Yeah.
Don't worry about those numbers for now.
There are 104, 101 condos, 101 areas where there are condos.
101 parcels.
Parcels, but there may be.
But there may be.
Quite a few.
We're going to get to that, because you've got a lot of data on condos here tonight. Well, I just want to pass this out to the board. This information, we're going to, I know it's overwhelming, but I just want to tell the board that we have been working on this district, and this has all been developed by Bob Shay, our GIS coordinator, who's been busy at work for the board. I just want, this map is a map of all your apartments, and we're using assessors data. Let me just grab my, my version of it here. So we have mapped, this according to what Bob has mapped for the board, maybe parcel and town. That's what this is right here. And it's 500, let's see, there's 530 parcels. And I just go through this information with you, based on this map. Just reading from left to right, let's see, there's your tax ID number, your parcel number, your map number, your address. There's a GIS link, just disregard that for now. We broke it down by village, East Falmouth, Falmouth, we'll get back to that, Woods Hole. There's a land use code, LUC. That's Department of Revenue land use code, that's how they assess things up there, we'll get into that a little bit. The land use code description, land use code 104 is a two-family. You might see land use code 109, the third one down, that's multiples houses on a lot. We'll get into a lot of that. A 105 is a three-family.
Which 105?
Just reading down the land use code, just so you know what they are. But don't worry, don't memorize it now, because this is going to, this is just an introduction tonight.
Sure.
And you'll see we broke it down by total acres. That's column H, the number of units. And then we have units per acre. Okay? And then that's that column J, and then you'll see the number of buildings. So just for the sake of argument, you'll see that 458 Central Avenue is in East Falmouth. It's the number one, it's a land use code 104, it's a two-family. It's on .49 acres, there are two units, so that's four units an acre, and there's one building. You ready for that?
Yeah.
And we broke that downtown wide. So what I really want the board to focus on a little bit, this map. Well, actually, let me do this. Underneath this map is a breakdown. This is only a townwide, it's a county map. Underneath that is a breakdown. That was breakdown. This, we chose to be, that's essentially a composite of all that area, potentially for Osprey, we followed the corridor, 328 corridor, over to the hospital lights. And that's this information.
This is just a blow-up of the middle section of the map we had.
That's correct.
So it's the same map.
Same, same.
It's a blow-up.
A midsection. Right, of this area. And the information I just handed out to you.
We just zoomed in.
This is, this is information we think is more rental-based information. And you see, again, we'll have your tax identification number, your address, your village. Most of this is, I don't know. I'm sorry. This is a blow-up of this map, of the bigger map of this area downtown. And this information will give you an idea of some, your 48 and your 8 to 12 type of apartment units. Let me just make sure I got this right, because this literally is hot off the press today. Now, these are the condos, this is more homeownership. But it'll give you an idea, if you look at that area where it says East Falmouth and Falmouth, disregard the North Falmouth, West Falmouth, Woods Hole, it's not on this blow-up map, but East Falmouth, Falmouth, T-Ticket is. And it'll give you an idea, especially in some of the areas we're talking about, Velvet Airplanes, along Main Street, along Palmer Avenue, Locust Street, it'll give you an idea of what's out there today on the ground in terms of these apartments, whether they have permits or not, we don't know, and at this point, we don't care. One of the things I want to draw the board's attention to, again, is column M, the last one on the right, you'll see there, your units per acre. And in these more densely developed areas, you'll see it ranges anywhere from 2.8 units per acre. All the way down in Woods Hole, you'll see there's a, on Millfield Street, you have 55 units an acre, because you have, where are my, six units on .11 acres. So I just want the board to focus on that a little bit, just so, because right now, we're talking about a density limit of six units an acre. But this is what's on the ground today, just take a moment to take it in, but in some instances, like I mentioned, Oddfellows Hall is 32 units an acre. I think the board's on the right track, because these areas are typically on the sewer, they're on the transit lines, they're already developed areas. But you can see 28.8 units an acre, 19 units an acre, 36 units an acre, 47 units an acre, 34 units an acre, 19, 38, 46, 24. It's on the ground today. And you can take a look at that map, and you can take a look at this information here, and pretty much identify them what they are. So we, this is when I got back to the point where we had to start thinking about how we define a unit. Because it could be a five-bedroom Garrison Colonial, or it can be a 500-square-foot microunit on Chantilly Lane. So I just want to bring to the board's attention tonight, where you're thinking about how we think about what is a multifamily district? And where they are, and the densities that are on the ground today. It's sort of surprising information, it cannot, I knew it was being developed over the last few weeks, but I think it's something the board can take a peek at tonight and just sort of absorb it, as we start working on this district. And I guess some initial thoughts, my initial thoughts were that I didn't want to shock your sensibilities by bringing in 40 units an acre. I want you to go out and take a look at what could be, let's see, if you look at Glenwood Avenue, this is number 40, under 33 Glenwood Avenue, it's right over here, next to Oddfellows Hall, is 47 units an acre.
I was curious about the new building on East Main Street. See that list?
That's a 4B.
Oh.
Right now, we just have 4A or.
You take it size a lot. You know, it's on it.
Pat, look at this. This area here, it's all sewer. But if you look at the map, and some of the common themes that are out there are, they're on Big Roads.
Right.
They're in, sometimes in sewer areas.
Or near the sewer.
Or they're near, but right now, they're not. A lot of the folks on Shore Street or King Street, Skranton Avenue, are not on a sewer. Although, some of the housing authority, we tried to discount the housing authority, we didn't put them in there right now. Public housing.
Yeah.
So we try to focus on privately owned, on the ground, right off Main Street or Big Roads, 4 to 8, 8 to 12 units. And just some food for thought, not stop talking. So the last piece of information we have for you. And that, to us, we're thinking is mostly, there are probably homeownership involved too, but they're probably renting accessory apartments, or other units on the ground. So this is all our condo information. Many are typically more of a data of ownership opportunities. You can have across the lane, so.
No, I was just curious what housing ATH is. There are a lot of them here.
Authority.
Ah, thank you.
So last bit of information to go with this map and the townwide map is that we, when I say we, I mean Bob Shay, broke down a lot of information with regards to condominium land.
Yeah.
Sometimes it takes a little sleuthing to figure out just how many units there are. But for the areas you see, I believe it's pink for your condos, you'll see that there's 102 parcels, that's what we got talked about with Ralph. And again, just to bring your attention to the acres, the number of buildings, go with the GIS acres. We utilize that number for now, so the assessors' information, because the assessors, the GIS polygons are very, are fairly accurate, and we had to use those. But again, in reading from left to right, you can see the number of buildings, and the GIS acres, number of units, and it'll also give you an idea of the units per acre. And you can see it's not as dense as your rental units, because some of these are special permits that require six units an acre. But others, you can see, are fairly, fairly high, and they've been out there for a while. I'll just bring your attention to number 27 on Grand Avenue, you can see is 35 units an acre. I believe that used to be an old laundry, and it was converted to, I believe, apartments on Grand Avenue years ago. It just turned out to be, I think, a extension of a non-deformant use, and it was issued a special permit at that density.
What's the address?
285 Grand Avenue.
286.
286.
So sometimes you can have adaptive reuse of existing structures into multifamily developments that aren't on the sewer. What are smaller units, existing buildings?
38 units an acre.
So Brian, you know, right now, we're with six and eight with the special permit. Is this exercise to get us to think of eight to 12, or 12 to 14, or?
I imply nothing in your view, but this is, this is information on the ground today. So the board, the board asked us to, what's on the ground today? This is what's on the ground today. If you want to stick with six units an acre, that's okay, but I think you need to at least think about, discuss, well, he was, you know, this seems to be working in some areas as adapted for use, this seems to be working on small lots with small units, if you're on Big Roads or on the sewer. Don't wed yourself to a stat 1 number, is what my, my take-home message is tonight. It might be that you want to think about a variety of numbers based on performance zoning. You're on the sewer, you're on, don't get stuck in.
Compatibility of the neighborhood, yeah. And not just a strict formula that's.
There you go.
Applied.
That's the take-home tonight.
Yeah.
Take a look at the maps, take a look at the data, we didn't make it up, something to think about. As you, if you want to increase opportunities, there are other ways to think about it. I've tried to at least educate the board members that a unit can be five-bedroom Garrison Colonial, a unit can be a 550 microunit, and you need to accommodate those differences.
Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my head around, because the number of units per acre is actually a extrapolation of the number of units on there in the area of the lot. So I'm just trying to think of how you would work the numbers, because you don't want to come out and say, okay, we're going to allow 50 units per acre in Falmouth, and then.
No, but the argument might be for 12 instead of 8.
Right, well.
Well, again, think of your neighborhood.
Right, but.
Whatever, whatever, whatever that measure is.
Yeah.
Whatever the formula may be, I just want the board to think about density outside the magic six units an acre, which appeared, I think, in 1980. But there are other ways to look at density.
And let's say that building on the corner of Main Street and Gifford, they could put 20 units in that. How do we allow that to happen without restricting to maybe six? Because that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Well, again, you could put down this, you can have a building that's 20,000 square feet. You can have then 10,000 square feet of habitable space, and we really don't care how you divvy that up. Because you could have five or six microunits, you could have a two-bedroom, you know, the space is the space. So you might want to think about a new matrix, not matrix, a new metric. So you might want to think about a new matrix, not matrix, a new metric, how we measure these things. And it could be impact-based zoning instead of performance zoning. So think about it in those terms. That's just, you know, interesting, interesting information.
Brian, you mentioned impact-based. How does one define impact-based if it's not in the eyes of the beholder?
You always use a measure. It's Title V, sewer floor, number of parking spaces, you know, whatever it might be, whatever that metric is, it's, it's, it's something quantifiable. Right? Not too much, not too much impact out there. A lot of performance space, you have to be on the sewer. You can only have so much this X, Y, Z. It's somewhat of a formula. But again, I think it's important that the board start thinking about these things, and not be too worried about, well, the norm should be six units an acre. The norm is anywhere from one, up to fifty-seven units an acre, because that's what you have today. And I need to get away from the units. We need to get to floor space or...
Can we, can we do the same thing with performance on the D-Nite system? Maybe if, I don't know, are there D-Nite systems that are, that are economical, that could handle twenty units? That would actually give the same equivalent of nitrogen protection if we get out of the sewer, or is that just...
Well, you know, there are condominium developments that have rotating biological contacts, package plants, PSTFs, private sewage treatment facilities. You're going to see one up in Valley Meets Zoo, or you may see one up another development someday soon. You know, the, we have them in town today.
Falmouth Port.
I think Falmouth Port might have one, I believe. The Seacross has a RBC unit. So you can have them out there.
So they're starting to come, yeah.
They've been there for twenty-five years.
They work better than a single-family, because there's more flow, it's easier to maintain it.
But as, as, you know, your capacity, you know, in the public sewers systems increases, again, we've made this deal with DDP, you have to have sort of a balance, net blood.
Right.
So if you think, you know, density developments here means a little less density developments elsewhere. At least in the sewer districts.
If we move to form-based code, how would this look under, under that? Would this be easier to do, less onerous?
Form-based code only concerns itself about how the building looks.
Okay.
Not the use.
Not the use. And we're looking at form-based code. I know Corey's going to start working on that with the board here soon.
We talk a lot about it.
Yeah, form-based code works. My sense is, we still need to address the, if you want to go pure form-based, then you don't worry about anything. This is, this is the building, this is what we want it to look like, and what goes on inside, we don't...
Right.
My sense is the town's not ready to go that direction, totally in that direction. But I think this information's for the board's consideration. I'll try to get you PDFs of this, and a matrix of this, so you have it.
I believe this is, we're taking little steps, and the multifamily's a big one. It's definitely behind accessory, want to go with that step first, I think, but we need to work on them both at the same time.
Yeah, we're working on both. But one is more, well, one was more advanced than the other, you never know. It's all sort of iterative. But I think, as we forward on the multifamily-type districts, I wanted to bring this information forward. You don't have to opine on it, I just want you to have it. I want you to be aware of it. So when I come in with ideas for the board to consider, you'll have this as your background.
Hey, another question.
Yes, Brian?
So Brian, if you, say you have an existing building, like the one Bob just mentioned on the corner of Gifford and Main, the old telephone company building?
Yep.
And that takes up a lot of that lot. And if you wanted to reuse that building, are you still bound by the existing six units per acre?
That's the point, right there. You just got right to it.
I didn't hear what...
I was just saying, mentioning about the building that you brought up. Say, for instance, that eventually would become apartments, and you can't really maximize the value of, of potential of that building because of this rule, where it's still on that six or eight per acre, whereas you could probably fit a lot more in there.
You have some giant buildings on Main Street that have nothing on the second and third floor.
Yeah.
They're empty shelves.
Because it's not worth it to do it.
But they could, if they could put ten or twelve, all of a sudden, the microunits it might start making sense. It's on the sewer, it's right downtown, it's got public transport. I'm not saying we should do this, but I mean, that's, that's what this discussion's about.
And this is sort of a, here's, it's on the ground today. I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying it's bad.
Right.
I'm just saying this is fact-based. This is what's on the ground today. Is there anything here you want to mimic, or work towards, that makes sense, that works? You have condominium developments, you have conversions, you have these two forty-dash-threes. Do you want to institutionalize the two forty-dash-threes, instead of going to the Board of Appeals to get thirty-seven units an acre as a not more detrimental standard? You say to yourselves, okay, that seems to work here. Do it by right. Convert that telephone building into, you know, apartments, or whatever it might be. Or you might have commercial space on the first floor and apartments above. But you're not wedded, you're not wedded to the magic six or eight units.
So we, we want to move more towards buildings and structures square footage, and definitions of dwelling units?
Yeah, right.
So that's where we need to start.
That's the direction we need to head in.
Yeah.
Or an example, if we did create a multifamily overlay district, we, this is a situation where we could apply it in Merryweather Sewers, and immediately increase the amount of available housing, potential housing, because right now we're restricted to six units per acre, and we could possibly get more inside existing structures if they were smaller, more affordable.
Right, if you want to say, okay, your unit can be, your, your conversion, or your, or your reuse of your building can be residential, no, unit can be more than X square feet.
Right.
Up to some ceiling, whatever it might be.
That'd be a way to help them stay reasonably priced, if I not have a giant unit, yeah.
Well, yeah, if you had a water view, you know, the market would say, well, that's worth, that's worth, that's value.
Right.
You go back on taxes, I don't know. But yeah, something to consider and think about. Educate yourselves about what your town has today, and where you want to head in the future. And this district is going to take some time.
Yeah.
You thought accessory apartments was... Remember, this started out in nineteen ninety-seven. East Main Street started back then, it evolved into the Business Street Development District. But, you know, we had the car wash proposal on Ny Road and other things that were coming forward, and that's when we started talking about multifamily. It goes through twenty years. I'm getting tired. You're wearing me down. It's like a comment, just return.
Well, stop saying it's okay if it takes a while.
It's okay, it's okay. Like I told you more than a time, it's America. But I think to know what exists, existing conditions is an important thing for the board to know. And these are existing conditions.
Yeah. Never take, never, never tell a kid, Cutter, there's no hurry, because it may happen.
All right, so we're going to move on here?
Yeah, I will return with some, I'm going to save some information.
[inaudible].
If you want. If I take these, I'll just send you. So you have electronic.
Yep.
That way you can just look at it on a computer, you don't have to kind of pull this stuff.
GIS guys, so I, I think it's on the computer already. GIS needs GIS slick. Okay. Next.
That looks nice and bad shade to do all that here.
No, we, this is my, I'm sorry, all this, yeah, again, can't help, I can't. Under...
Can't think of that.
Appreciate Bob, this is the type of GIS analytics that the town invested wisely. It would have taken us, we couldn't do it, to actually sit down the way we used to do it back in nineteen ninety. Holsey and I, some of these build-out analysis, he literally went parcel to parcel with a calculator, and it took years. This took a few weeks.
Yes.
A wise investment in the town, so...
Dump, your hands in the dump right now.
And if you haven't already done so, please thank him for us profusely.
Oh, yeah, we will be utilizing his services. He's going to get good sick in there.
Okay, next.
Next, you'll have a, you'll have a very poor attempt at, by your town planner, to give you an aerial photography with a North Arrow and a Legend. Because I see my ass, Bob Shade, is doing. You'll see, this is an aerial photography of the tech park area. One of the things the board wanted to start discussing right after our discussion with Megan, was, look at some of the low-hanging fruit with regards to what we can do for standalone photovoltaic arrays in light industrial districts. It didn't come out quite well, but you see that red line around the tech park?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yep.
That's the limit, you see, actually, the water tower, it's not as profuse, so you're going to gap like that. That's the outline of the Light Industrial B district, zoning district. And you'll see there's the landfill to the east, to the right. And this was taken in two thousand and fourteen before the Insteepship Authority built its parking lot up there. But that's, this is Mr. Stone's development here. It's now the Insteepship Authority's parking lot, right here.
What's the date of this photo, do you know?
This is two thousand and fourteen. This is the new hockey rink. You see the hockey rink, right? The ice arena has the photovoltaics in the parking lot, you know, top of the building. See, as you'll notice, I believe, Webb has it, and I think it's, is that accurate, plastic? No, it's accurate, plastic. That must be, so it's just Cape Town. Now the MBL. This is the area that Town Meeting just re-zoned Light Industrial C for the photovoltaic arrays on. And you see, these are, these are gravel pits owned by private entity. These areas here and here, and across the street. So it gives you an idea of what's on the ground out there. But you'll notice that the Light Industrial B zone is, is only the tech park. And you'll notice there's one vacant lot over towards the landfill. Dow came in many, many years ago for a site plan review for a warehouse-type building there. I think he cleared the lot. But that's the one vacant lot that's out there. I think it's four acres. Otherwise, you have vacant lots next to Mr. Webb's development, the cul-de-sac.
Just one here, I think.
Here's Mr. Webb's.
That was owned by this guy.
I think it's owned by them. And there's one other underutilized lot here, and I believe Dr., this is Dr. Hanjo, there's some vacant lot like that.
There's one more here. Irregular.
Right, this is Dr. Hanjo, I believe that's the other vacant lot. They're all patreed. So I'm not sure what you'll get by, by getting into Light Industrial B zoning in that area. Something to consider, but I don't think you're going to get a lot of bang for the buck out of that.
So right now, they can put solar mounted arrays as an auxiliary use already?
Correct.
So that, we're not saying, they could fill, these lots could fill, if it's secondary to an existing building, they could have a big one?
So you know, anywhere in town.
Right.
If you want to have it up on the house, up on your roof of your house, or on the roof of your hockey rink, you can have it. What we're talking about here is standalone principal use of the lot. So there is a candidate lot in the LIV zone, you know, it's been vacant there for quite some time. It's up to the board if you wanted to investigate it any further. Otherwise, the lots are fairly well, either, they're either developed, or they're still wooded. And if the idea is to create, you know, jobs up there, you may want to think about that for a while.
Not that I know the answer, but I would like to just have a discussion on it. What, I guess your point, Brian, we may not get much bang for our buck, but what's the problem? Is there a problem if we do make them ground-mounted solar arrays, or someday in the future, somebody may decide they want to clear that lot, or it's, it's, it's an industrial lot, it's not a residential lot? Do you, that's what I was, wanted to bring this up for discussion, see if there's any issues there.
Well, this whole area is run by EDIC. Isn't there the responsibility for developing these vacant lots and things like that?
The...
Right, but we do the zoning.
Some of the lots have reverted back to the EDIC, but many are still privately held.
Sold off.
Sold off.
But still, they're responsible for developing this tech park, aren't they?
I'd have to find out exactly how many lots have reverted, either reverted back or under their ownership. The ownership's not too, too important. It might be that they want to sell it to a person who wants to put up four acres of photovoltaic array.
Then it would count.
Right, then it would count. But I'm just saying, right now, the amount of vacant land that there is, it's not great. You may want to think about, you may want to think about, okay, if someone comes back to you and wants to put a, put a photovoltaic array in there, they can re-zon it Light Industrial C, or they can build a building and put it on top of the roof.
Or we can make it a buy-right use, and they can just go ahead and do it.
Or you could do that.
That's, that was, I want, that's the, that's what I wanted to have the discussion, not that we should do that, I just wanted to have that, that was the point of this conversation. That this would be, if we were to do this, we have a public discussion, you know, everybody would come in, the neighbors, you know the process, because it's not decided by us. We start off the conversation, and then we decide whether we want it to be a buy-right use or not, or just leave it the way it is.
Right. Well, at least you have an idea of what's out there. This is an air photo, two thousand and fourteen. It's up to the board. You know, it may make some sense, some of these lots have encroachments. You may recall, we had to pay some folks some money because of the encroachments from the landfill. You know, that in itself is a disincentive sometimes to develop it for commercial purposes. You just may want to put a PB panels up there.
And I got a question. Why would we want to do just Light Industrial B and not consider A or other areas?
Well, Light Industrial A has a lot of residential in it, and then we have a mixed use we have to battle. This was, because this is easier, because there's no residential here. But many of the areas that I'm familiar with in Light Industrial A have huge condominium developments in it. That's, that's a, that's a whole nother issue. Yes, we could do that, but that's, this was, because this was easier, is the answer?
It's the low-hanging fruit.
It's the quicker one?
It's the quicker, start there.
It doesn't, and it's also located right here. We don't have to have hearings all over town with the butters from everywhere, we're, we're already here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, those are the two main reasons, Doc.
Exactly.
Okay.
So again, you can think it over, go out and visit the sites. Because I can email you a PDF of this air photo. Think, think about it. Don't use it for a decision tonight, because I'm not sure we're going to make it to this Town Meeting anyhow. The April Town.
We should see that.
Yeah, guess Pat?
The basic question that I would throw out, because this is a limited area like this, and because we have very limited industrial area, that if we give a buy-right usage to be able to develop on the ground a photovoltaic field, we're essentially letting industrial usage go away by right, should somebody choose to do that.
Except unless you're going to use industrial use.
I'm looking at employment base.
Employment base, yeah.
And I think that's a basic question to decide whether we want ground-mounted to go by, by right in this area, because it takes away the potential for an employment base.
That's a good point.
It's a good point. And, you know, if a business was out there, as you can see, it's easy to put the solar on your roof anyway.
On the roof.
Or on your parking lot.
So I think I would hesitate, just my own comment on this. We established light industrial C because our industrial land was being gobbled up by residential usage. In this case, we'd be allowing the remaining part of it to be gobbled up by photovoltaic arrays that are by right on the ground.
Well, let's talk about looking in this area, because when we developed light industrial C, we really didn't assign it to any place, so we just talked in general terms. It was always going to be in this area here. I guess what you're saying, that you, from here in your path, maybe this area, you probably want it more for buildings, are there other areas you could see where we would go light industrial C, so we could get ground-mounted there? Or, or we're gonna have the same argument, maybe we should do that either? Your argument bodes well for taking that away.
I don't know. I just know right here, one of the arguments for doing this whole area here is the stimulation, the intellectual stimulation that people could get by having others of like mind in a similar area. I don't know that that's occurred, but that was an argument for the industrial park way back when.
It was, I don't know if we really achieved that to the level, if you go out there, it's pretty quiet.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean that we should take away the potential for 50 years from now, that may change.
You know, honestly, I don't think that ground-mounted as a primary use is a great idea, other than like in the landfill, where the land's not usable otherwise.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it should be accessory, like these parking things over at the rink. I think I'd love to see them all over town.
Yeah, I don't see where creating a mom-and-pop solar power plant is really in the town's best interests.
Well, if we find a parcel where it goes, then you're saying the best way to do it is re-zoning.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you seen that?
Yeah. Now, this, this is town land up here, isn't it?
Yeah.
And is that public use?
No, I think that's agricultural.
This is ag...
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that's, I thought there was a...
That's ag, yeah. Public use ban is here, it's all agricultural up there, and over here.
For some reason, I thought there was that strip.
I have the zoning map memorized from this part of town.
And a lot of that, I think, is landlocked, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, but there's a cure.
Well, I know there's a cure, but it is a cured.
No.
Again, the area just in north of the tech park, most of it is light industrial A.
Right.
But you'll see, it's pretty much developed.
So I guess what I'm hearing is there's really not an appetite for making this a use?
Not as a primary, more as an accessory.
Just leave it as accessory?
I think we should find a way to incorporate more of this ground-mounted, just like these, if there is some way that we can do something to encourage it. I don't know that we're inhibiting it now, I don't think we are. But when Ms. Ambler came in with the proposition to put ground-mounted solar...
On all industrial. On B and A. That was her proposal.
Yeah.
A and B, I should say.
Right. But I think that that would be fine with me, but not as a primary use? Because these are the creative ideas that people are gonna start to come up with.
What kind of mix does that, if you make it a ground-mounted, but not as a primary use?
You can have ground-mounted as an accessory use.
Can you do that right now?
It's just like the ice rink.
So, so there isn't a need to change it?
I think her request, so it could be town-wide, if I understood correctly, not just in industrial.
Not just industrial, I thought hers was...
I think they wanted, they wanted it as a primary use. Standalone PV racks, just like the land.
So it could be on an empty lot?
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Okay. Is there anything now that prohibits...
I guess I'm hearing no primary use, you're saying?
It just doesn't seem like it's, like Pat said, I mean, I just don't think it's beneficial to us. I think we'd rather see a business in there first, and then use the PV as an accessory.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with Pat to take away industrial land, because who knows, I mean, 25 years from now, that could all be filled up.
I agree. I thought leaving it up to the investor, the land, to make their choice, so they can decide the economics would be the better thing to do, but if you need to, I'm not gonna argue with you, keeping it for, that's the purpose.
I mean, they can put almost as much as...
They can.
Yeah.
They can, that's where, that's where the argument goes away. If they build the right building, they can do both. And that's really, that's hard to argue against.
All of these buildings have come in before us, I believe, for permits. We've seen a lot of them while I've been on the board.
Most of the activity was in the 90s.
So I have another question. Is, what is the status now? If I want to put a roof structure over my driveway, ground-mounted solar PV, is it permissible now? Or is it a structure? Does it have to be setback from the road?
Well, it's a structure. So, but if you have a single-family home and you want to have a ground-mounted system, you can have it as accessory to your use.
And could, but I would need some relief as far as setbacks?
Yes.
In order to, so what would I do? Apply for variance or special permit or something to have that? How would that be permissible?
Self-imposed, no, you couldn't apply for a variance. Well, you could, you can always apply for a variance, but remember, a variance is the disfavored form of relief to be sparingly granted, very certain criteria, soil shape, topography, not the preferred alternative. The board may want to say to themselves, well, maybe for ground-mounted PDs, you know, you could have a process, that you could go up to the lot line by some sort of regulatory method, but we haven't seen an overwhelming demand for that. Most people put it up on the roofs.
Yeah, a lot like your neighbor could have a tree and ruins the whole thing. I mean, it really needs to be set back for it to work.
Well, I'm not thinking of the lot line as much as like these parking coves. I'm just kind of stuck on that right now.
Like a cop would.
Yeah, a lot of people would probably like to have their car protected. Might be something...
Well, they could build a garage and put it on.
Or a car.
Not too close to the road. A lot of driveways are closer to the road than the house.
Right, and we have a bylaw, no garage in the front yard.
Right.
So there's...
So I'm wondering if these solar canopies...
I don't know how good they are, I don't know. I'm a little concerned about that. I think that's, that's a good rule.
Not attractive.
Not attractive, myself, I'm not in favor of it. I just wouldn't want to see solar canopies going up and down, just the fact for them, I think they look much better in the backyard.
Yeah.
I think we'd get hung if we did that.
Solar town.
So what I'm hearing, the board is, we'll leave...
Doesn't have much traction.
Not much traction there, and we'll move on to other public use zones next, I guess. There are some very large public use zones owned by Pui, down off in the campus areas. Not so much residential, there's some up by Cedar Lake that's owned public use, that are single-family homes. So let me start with the, I'll start with the public use zones next. My sense is the light industrial zones, for the same arguments I heard here, you know, ground-mounted, right.
I think I can mention something, because it was about the light industrial zone and ground-mounted solar array. The bidder we chose, this is the EDIC now, for this lot, has said to us, if we find another 10-acre parcel somewhere in town, they will build one for free, and they'll give the power back to 280 families.
I know, of course, costing us money, but...
So part of the exercise is we're out looking for it.
So does it have to be in one location?
Well, it works better. Your connections always work better if you put in one, but they, I guess it works as two, one acre, I mean, two five acres.
How many acres is the high school parking lot?
You need, you need five acres for a megawatt, four and a half acres for a megawatt, roughly speaking.
So we should maybe look at large parking areas, like Steamship Authority, or some other place like that, where we could develop this.
Or gravel pits that are already cleared?
Maybe. If they're not suitable for future development.
Here's one. Let's say you have a subdivision, and you've got residents that are willing to carve out a section and put in a ground-mounted photo array, PV array, to help power their houses.
We shouldn't exclude it.
Just throwing it out there.
In that case, Brian, that would be accessory though, wouldn't it?
It's on a separate lot.
Yeah.
I think if it's a PRD, like we were talking about...
It would be a common lot then, if it was...
If it's in the open space, you can allow certain uses in the open space. So let's say you had an old farm, had already been cleared, and they want to put PV array in it. I've never seen it before, but the board has that discretion.
So that could already happen?
So that could already happen.
Nice thought, that's interesting.
In a planned residential development.
Yes.
If you're in a grid subdivision, and you have a standalone lot, nothing couldn't happen.
Well, maybe that was the intent of...
I was thinking that was our conversation, but I was listening to a zoning board talking about that just the other night.
Yeah. We had that discussion the other night with regard to the Green Communities Act. Langrishe, the Attorney General's Office, thought we ought to examine, but we decided the legal law at this point, if someone really has an association, they can come back and do a PRD special. All right, so I'll move on to public use zones, and we'll see you sometime in January on that.
Yep, keep moving these things. General correspondence, I passed over it, but we had a letter to the planning board regarding McGansett Crossing, which we gave an approval of. We had a letter in favor of that, I had read it, didn't bother bringing it up, because I thought we were gonna endorse it anyway, but that was in the correspondence we had That's the only correspondence, right, Brian, click, or Mr. Dooly?
Who's it from?
This character named John Drooly, let's see, he's in the back room here, he's a developer. And the next item is future, future agenda items.
It's not a future, but are we set for Saturday's meeting?
It's gonna be the next issue, next meeting.
Okay, well, I see December 15th down here, so...
We can, we can go right into it, yeah, there's no one jumping up for a future agenda item here, we might as well go right into, next, it's been brought up that Ken can't make it, and Ralph, you had a...
I have a conflict.
You have a conflict as well?
And when?
For Saturday.
Saturday.
How about the Board of Selectmen, do they have any conflicts?
They haven't been sharing anything with me on that.
Do they have an agenda?
Yes, there, there is an agenda, it's being close to being finalized. We've been going back and forth, something that got dropped off that we wanted on it was the, the transportation plan. The important, the bigger issue on it is, there was their discussion on some of their plans for reorganizing the, the planning, building group. They have some thoughts, they wanted to discuss on that. What else was on it, Brian?
Oh, they wanted, the board wanted to talk about resiliency issues?
Yes, we wanted to talk about resilience with them.
Resiliency issues, the board wanted also to talk about housing, where you are with your accessory apartment bylaw, and your multi-family district, so you wanted to talk about housing with the Selectmen. And the Selectmen wanted to talk about, you know, one item, which was their community development department.
And I really wanted to get into it with them on the housing, you know, I wanted to have, just like we had tonight, you know, I think we cleared up, I mean, I was under the assumption that you and I were thinking the same thing, and one figured we weren't. I think that that's why these open discussions, free discussions are important, because we just, they're free-form and we, things comes out. I wanted to have that same level of discussion with them, with all of us, or most of us, so if we can't do it...
Well, we've already scheduled it, right?
Right.
Yeah, it'd be 8:00 AM on Saturday morning.
What time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Did I hear you say the transportation is on the...
Well, we, I've asked, it got dropped off, and I don't know if it was an accident, and I called Doug up and I asked him to put it back on again, so. I think I have until, when's the deadline for...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so...
Are we talking about discussing the whole man report?
Yeah.
Or just the element?
I think we wanted the element, and I think they wanted to talk, I think they had talked about the, the big study, wasn't that on the agenda too? Route 28, though?
The whole thing was dropped off.
No, that's right, it was, and it was, it was just dropped off.
We need to have a full discussion on the element before we bring it back to town meeting.
I mean, if it's just the element, that wouldn't be that long, as far as...
But I think it's important, I think we had enough there, even if we didn't do the element, I think the housing issue is really, really important. And I think a long, hard discussion, all the points that we brought up, see how they feel about it, you know, get their input. They may swing us a little bit more one way, or swing us back either way, but I'd like, that's what I was hoping to have a give and take with them, and that, that's probably the most important one. So we game to go, if Ralph can't make it, will it be five of us instead of seven? That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll still go.
Ron?
What's the anticipated length of this? 10, eight to 12, whatever?
Eight to five.
Eight to five?
Paul, when do you, how much time do you have?
Half an hour for lunch.
Nine to five, Dolly, pardon.
Well, I think they're, they're gonna set the timeframe, I'm wondering what they're setting as a timeframe.
Well, I turned it back to you and asked you a question, how much time do you have? I can tell them. I mean, I gotta pick up the phone and say, this is what we have, tell me what you want.
Eight to 10.
Okay. Well, that's what we'll go, I'll ask them for eight to 10.
That, that will cover...
Well, that's right.
Eight to noon.
Yeah, we'd have to go to noon time.
You got any more time?
Yeah, you asked me.
Well, you got overwritten.
We're taking more of your time. It seems like to noon would be...
I would say eight to noon.
Okay. Hey, I'm letting you guys...
If we finish early, we'll...
Yeah, if we finish early, fine.
Yeah.
The last time we had a workshop sort of thing like this, it went till about 11:30. And they provided the donuts and the coffee.
And if we got three items, you know, three hours.
Okay.
Or an hour each.
It's here.
Right here.
Oh, it's here, we're not doing it in the library.
Oh, the other item on the agenda, I'm sorry, the other item on the agenda the Selectmen wanted to discuss with the planning board was the creation of a cultural district.
Oh, yeah.
My sense is that that whole, the Highfield Hall initiatives and whatnot, so that's also on their agenda, so it's two for you and two for them.
Yeah, our little committee of three had talked about that.
My sense is, you know, you're gonna go three hours.
Yeah.
And it's, it's discussion only, that's what it is, we're just having discussions.
We're not anticipating any votes.
Right, no votes, no, no hearings, we're just talking to each other about our thoughts on it, that we'll bring back for action at a later date.
Right. Except, I'm sorry, the transportation element, it's not on there, if it does go back on...
That could get voted.
I think that's the only thing that the board wants to have on for the upcoming panel.
We should, we should try to come to a vote on that.
Yeah.
We should.
Hey, if we don't, maybe we just go to one of their meetings for one session and iron it out with them.
Put it on the agenda.
True. We could, we could do it that way, just show up at their meeting, hear the one thing and get out.
Actually, let's do that. I think, I think that's a good idea. These are global issues.
Right, this is more of an ironing and wordsmithing type.
Correct.
What do you think about that, Pat? Are you okay with that?
I think there is likely to be more discussion than showing up at one of their meetings and being allotted 10 minutes.
You're right, that's why, let's see what happens, let's put it on and see what happens.
That gets back to you, and gets back to you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, good question.
Yes, Paul?
The agenda says the 15, does this take the place in the meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah, because it's... Yeah, because it should say the 12th, yeah.
Saturday's the 12th, 15th is what it says here, that's next Tuesday. Are we meeting from today?
I'll leave it up to the board members, if you want this 12th meeting in lieu of, might make some sense, gives me some time to work on these items. I'll see you on the 29th.
No, Ken is out, I have to be out, I don't know who else is available on that Tuesday.
Sounds good then.
29th, your next regularly scheduled meeting will be the 29th.
Okay.
And so this meeting is the 12th?
The 22nd?
No, we wouldn't meet Christmas week.
Christmas week, no?
I find those to be problematic.
Don't want to meet?
Okay, I move for a German?
Second?
On favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, that was great.